You're watching Cable Two.
Good evening and welcome to the September 24th, 2024 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools' Board of Education meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance, and I also say good evening to our viewers on Cable Two. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alice from Alice in Wonderland said, "I could tell you my adventure beginning this morning," she said timidly, "but it's no use going back to yesterday because I am a different person than I am now." Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Our next order of business is the agenda review. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
No approval.
Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohannon, a second by Board Member Barr. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next is our student performance. Please welcome Alice Flores Uceda, who will read Say Feliz Siempre.
Good evening, everyone. Alice Uceda is a second grader at Mineral Springs Elementary School, but she is also a published author with the release of her first children's book, Say Feliz Siempre. This translates into "Always Be Happy" in English. Say Feliz Siempre provides advice from the author on how to lead a happier life based on her own experiences, including being kind to others, practicing healthy habits, working towards personal goals, and being mindful and thankful about the good things in life. Happiness is important to Ms. Uceda, not only for herself, but for everybody around her, so she wanted her book to spread as much joy to her community as possible. Just so you know, the Spanish edition of this book is already available on Amazon in paperback and Kindle versions. And now, reading a passage from her book, Say Feliz Siempre, please welcome published author Alice Uceda.
Always be happy. Hola soy Alice y quiero todos los niños en este país que sean felices. ¿Cómo puedes hacer feliz? Les vamos a ver en estas páginas. I'm Alice, and I want all the students in the world to be happy. And you may ask, how can a child be happy? Let's find out together on these pages. Good afternoon, everybody, and let's start to read this book. How can we be happy? Let's find out. Follow your dreams. The first thing we need to do is follow our dreams. It doesn't matter if you're something else. If somebody told you to be that, don't do it. You have to do what you can do. Be authentic. To be happy, be what you want to be. It doesn't matter if you want to, if you're different. It doesn't matter if you're not like, it doesn't matter if you're unique. It does matter you're beautiful, the way you are. Believe in yourself. Never give up. If you give up, you will not own no things. You will never own things. Never give up. Just try again if you don't win on a game. Impress your emotions. Talk about with your parents. When you're sad or when you're scared or angry, when you have emotions, just express it with your parents. Do the good. Do the good. That will make you happier. If you do the good, it will make you so happy. Don't do the bad. It will make you sad. Take care of your body. Take care of your body. Eat vegetables, sleep early, and don't watch TV at night, and don't eat a lot of junk food. Value your friends. Value your friends. That will make you happy. If you value your friends, they will be happy and you too. Don't be mean to them. If you be mean to them, you will not have any friends. Learn something new. Learn something new. That will make you happy. Learn the guitar or piano. If you don't learn something new, it will not make you happy. It will make you bored. Be grateful. Be grateful for your house, your family, and all the stuff you have. Be grateful with your stuff. And lastly, enjoy the little things. Enjoy some ice cream. I like eating ice cream. Yo, a mí me gusta tomar helado porque eso es pequeño. Me gustan mis cosas pequeñas cuando mis padres miran cosas pequeñas. Done.
Yes, are your parents here? Can they stand up? Your mom? Your family? What incredible words to live by. Grandma! Yay grandma! Oh, gosh, that was wonderful. Just wonderful. So our next order of business are the special recognitions. Brooke Bryan, the EC Director of Related and Internate Services, I know that word, I don't know why I always get jumbled up on it, will recognize the World Day of the Deaf and Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools' Deaf and Hard of Hearing Staff Recognition.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent McManus, and members of the board. Thank you for having me back again this evening for this special recognition. Tonight, we want to honor our teachers of the Deaf and Hard of Hearing and all of our support staff for the Department of Deaf and Hard of Hearing, including our interpreters, our language facilitators, and our multiple support staff that we have supporting our students who are deaf and hard of hearing. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools is the home to 10 teachers of the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, 19 interpreters, and five language facilitators. Our team provides direct services to approximately 110 students district-wide. Our staff aims to provide the necessary support and resources to help students independently succeed in their least restrictive learning environment. Our DHH staff collaborate closely with classroom teachers, speech-language pathologists, and families to support our students as they rise to their maximum communication and learning potential. They have a specialized background with the communication, academic, social, and functional impact of hearing laws. They support our students with the technology and personal amplification needed to access their total school environment. September 29th is World Day of the Deaf. I knew I was gonna do that! I knew I was gonna do that! I'm so sorry! I was like, preparing for this. I was like, why did we call it that? World Day of the Deaf. This is a day when we recognize the many achievements of individuals who are deaf around the world. It is a time to raise awareness of the challenges faced by deaf people and to create an awareness of the incidence of avoidable permanent hearing loss. Thank you so much for this opportunity. We do have members in our audience. If you would please stand to be recognized, our teachers of the Deaf and Hard of Hearing, our interpreters, our language facilitators. Thank you so much.
Next, Erin Edwards and Penny Martin, who is the Lead AIG for Secondary School, will lead us in the Governor's School Attendee Recognition.
Good evening, Ms. McManus, Board Members, and guests. I am Erin Edwards, the Director of Advanced Learning, and this is Penny Martin, the District's Governor's School Coordinator. We're here to recognize our 2024 Governor's School students. The North Carolina Governor's School is a four-week summer residential program for gifted and talented high school students, integrating academic disciplines, the arts, and unique courses at Meredith College and Greensboro College. The curriculum emphasizes exploring each discipline's latest ideas and concepts without involving credit, tests, or grades. This summer, some of North Carolina's brightest young minds had the remarkable opportunity to attend the prestigious North Carolina Governor's School program. This highly selective academic enrichment experience challenges students to push the boundaries of their intellectual and creative capacities. We are incredibly proud of all of your dedication, hard work, and pursuit of excellence. Being selected for Governor's School is no small feat, and your commitment to learning, creativity, and innovation has set you apart. 101 students from our district applied to the Governor's School, with 33 being selected by the Department of Public Instruction. As you've returned from this remarkable experience, we hope you carry forward your knowledge, friendships, and inspiration that you gained during your time there. Your contributions to your schools, communities, and beyond will continue to make a lasting impact. Keep pushing those boundaries. Stay curious. And remember, this is just the beginning of your journey towards greatness. We are excited to see all the amazing things that you will accomplish in the future. Welcome back, and congratulations on this well-deserved achievement. At this time, we would like to call our students up to receive a certificate of recognition. All of the students who are not in attendance tonight, however, have their names listed in the agenda. We'll be sure to forward their certificates to their school. Parents and guardians, please stand when your child's name is called.
We would like to invite our superintendent, Ms. McManus, to come and hand out the certificates, please.
Lizzie Grace Allen. Samaya Carter. Claire Farrell. Grace Galyon. Chadwick Holmes. Isaiah McFarland. Lauren Shin. Will Smith. Ryan Thornton Johnson. Sloane Whalen. Lilly Zax. And Vince Burton. Congratulations on your achievement.
Next, Colonel John Brown will lead us in the JROTC recognitions.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Ms. McManus, ladies and gentlemen, it is truly an honor to be here to recognize some outstanding JROTC cadets today. Over the summertime and at the end of last year, we had some cadets that were able to participate in the national level events in JROTC. One event is called JLAB, which is the Junior Leadership and Academic Bowl, where students get the chance to win competitions to go to Washington DC for the national level. I've also had the opportunity to have marksmanship teams, raider teams, and archery teams compete at the national levels in the JROTC program. Those that competed in JLAB, you're talking about 20 schools that are offered or given the opportunity to go to DC out of over 1,700 schools that compete. So you're talking about very few that get that opportunity. Same thing when it comes to both the marksmanship raiders and the archery teams. They go through competitions during the year where they compete against schools nationwide in order to go to national events. So that's what we're going to be doing today, is recognizing these outstanding cadets and the achievements that they've had over the summertime. First on the agenda, the first two cadets that we have, Cadet Devon Brown and Cadet Addison Comin, both competed at the national level in Washington DC for the JLAB competition. They finished 17th overall, like I stated earlier, out of over 1,700 schools that compete during the school year. Cadet Devon Brown is also being recognized, this is her second, for the raider competitions that they came in third place for Fort Liberty's Best of the Best competition. They will be going to Cadet Command out at Fort Knox, Kentucky at the end of October to compete at the national level again. Next, we have Cadet Addison Comin, same JLAB and Raiders. Next, we have Cadet Jeremy Clevenger. We also, from West Forsyth, had teams that competed in air rifle. Two outstanding cadets that did. Jeremy Clevenger, they placed NRA National Champions position air rifle and four-shot standing air rifle. That's Clevenger, and also the same for Cadet Maggie Lee. Next, we have Cadet Victoria Piquinto, also on the raider team. They'll be competing at Nationals at the end of October at Fort Knox, Kentucky. Cadet Piquinto is also being recognized as an honor graduate for this summer's JCLC, which is our part of summer camp that they get to go out for adventure training. Next, we've got two cadets that, archery is a brand-new program that has started within the JROTC program, where they, I'd say it's been about three years that we've had archery equipment. It's called the NASS program, where they get to compete at the national level. And the team from Mount Taber was able to go to Louisville, Kentucky to compete this year. So we're looking for Cadet Sabo Rabiati. And also Cadet Franks. Okay, last, like I stated earlier, we have cadets that participate at summer camp every year, usually going to Fort Jackson. This year, we had the following cadets for either honor graduate or marksmanship for their times that they had. We've got Cadet Natasha McGowan, honor graduate from Parker High School. Cadet Garcia Delarosa from Parkland High School. And Cadet Ella Goodman from Atkins High School. Thank you, sir.
As you may have noticed, this year, we're making our Board Spotlight videos more student and employee-focused. Tonight, we've got an inspiring story that truly highlights the spirits of the students in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. Recently, members of West Forsyth High School's Junior ROTC program paid a visit to Lorance Middle School to teach their younger counterparts the proper etiquette of raising, lowering, and handling the American flag. Cable Two's Kevin Renn was there and shows us how this small gesture made for an unforgettable day.
Well, we brought out a small group of our Junior ROTC cadets to Lorance to help guide the students here through some flag protocol. We have flags at every one of the schools in the district and across the state, and part of our curriculum in Junior ROTC is how to do these customs and courtesies properly. And so it's good for our cadets to not just learn it in the classroom, but to teach it to other students and other people in the community.
And then pull. Here.
We show them how to hold the flag properly, fold the flag, attach the flag to the halyard, and raise the flag, and then what to do when it goes to half-staff.
And then you're just gonna keep following this line. There you go. Perfect.
Partnering with Lorance is an amazing opportunity because a lot of these kids are never going to get opportunities like that. So it's really great for our students. It's great for their students, and everybody wins.
Good job.
They were all very excited and very happy to learn how to do it, and they were all just very joyous.
It's fun to take the flag down.
I enjoyed it very much. Seeing the smiles on their faces, I was overcome with joy. I even told them that they might take my friend's spot. They did it better than him. So it was like, yeah.
Ooh, the flag means, looks like the United States of America.
I wanted to cry, but it was tears of joy because seeing them doing it and just feeling accomplished, it just really brought a lot of joy to my heart.
It's me, the national anthem.
You know, having the impact on the students here at Lorance.
It looks very good, the flag of the United States of America. And to a public provision stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
That's really great, too, because they all got behind each other, and it was just a, there was a lot of joy. So it was good.
I'm so proud of all, everybody did great so far during the flag this morning. I'm super, I'm impressed with that.
These kids finally got a chance to do something they thought they could never do, and it just brought me so much joy.
Can I have a moment of privilege just to say, there are so many amazing and joyful things going on in our district. I'm just so touched. Just, it's wonderful.
I should have thought of this earlier, but we had a room full back there of our JROTC staff, like those folks that take kids to Kentucky, take kids all over this country to compete and to learn, and they're the most incredible group. So please let them know that, Lieutenant Colonel Brown, that we really appreciate it. We're very fortunate to have an incredible JROTC staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next order of business is a public hearing on the naming of the RJ Reynolds High School Greenhouse. We don't have any speakers coming forth, but Darrell Walker, our Chief Planning and Construction Officer, will discuss the proposed recommended name.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Chairman, Madam Board.
What a great night of positive messaging, and so we get an opportunity to continue that here tonight with the request on a public hearing for the naming of the RJ Reynolds High School Greenhouse. High School Greenhouse after someone who gave back a lot to RJ Reynolds, Mr. Glenn Perryman. Mr. Perryman was a part of the original build of the greenhouse, he had 25-plus years of service to RJ Reynolds High School, and so, tonight, we have an opportunity to recognize that, and that I think there actually is a community group that's kind of restoring the old greenhouse to be named after Mr. Perryman. I do think Principal from Reynolds is here, I don't know if he has the plans to say anything, but I do know that there was a lot of interest in this and very, very well supported in the community, so with that, I'll step aside and let you guys have some discussion if you'd like to.
Any questions? Thank you very much. At this time, we're gonna hear the public comments on Agenda Items Only. If you've signed up to speak, we ask that you sit close to the aisle seats, closest to the podium. We expect civility, please be kind, considerate, and respectful, and direct your comments only to me as Board Chair and not to anyone in the audience, and know that we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. Please know that each public comment is heard, there's a follow-up process to address your questions or concerns. You have three minutes to speak, and if you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. So, our first speaker tonight is Jessica Page.
I'd like to speak on the Open Gate Agenda Item. Safety has been an issue in this district, as far as I'm concerned, for the 10 years that we've been here. Five years ago, before COVID, I was kicking in every commissioner's door, trying to convince the district, the commissioners, to fund, as well as our county sheriff, Kimbrough, to fund SROs in our elementary schools because of the beatings my children were taking. I don't feel that, I was told that the dollars need to make sense. What I was told it would cost to get SROs in our elementary school is roughly about what you guys are quoting, Open Gate to Cost Us. My concern is, I haven't heard mention of how that would look in elementary, if that's to be applied to those schools as well, and I have concerns that we're throwing over a million dollars at something that, in my opinion, is not the solution. I have children in every level of the school, middle, elementary, and high, and these kids know how to get around the detectors. They leave things outside the school, and they come back and retrieve them later. Children are tipped off by other children, as far as I'm concerned, we're wasting over a million dollars. It sounds really safe, and I fear that that is a false sense of security. The same words that were told to me is what I'd like to tell you, the board, the dollars need to make sense. I think what was very beneficial that our district did was a financial incentive for higher-level admin to take over failing schools. I think our target should be literacy and better leadership, not essentially making this a military state. I think the metal detectors give a false sense of security, and I'm concerned of what would happen on a bus, or what would happen in this instance. These kids are really smart, and if they want to get around something, they're going to, and I think this money could be better invested in more support for our administrators, so that they can make changes within their dynamics in their schools, that they would have better support, and I just really feel like this is a poor waste of our funds, and the dollars don't make sense.
Thank you. Nathan Parrish.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. First, there are two things, and I think they're related. Let me start with the Fostering Diversity Grant Initiative, and say a word of appreciation to those who made application. And more than three years ago, the Coalition for Equity in Public Education submitted a document to the school board with some recommendations, and at the core of that document's recommendations were, in fact, to look at the very issues that this grant intends to examine. So, with 30 years, with no real review, I think it'll be good for the community, I think the conversations, if they're facilitated well, and people feel like they're heard, will be good for us as a community. I attended one session already, and I think there are some things that, you know, it's hard to know what expectations people have when they come. There was a little frustration over a lack of specificity, and just more, you know, kind of hearing and listening. They didn't really know what they were supposed to, many people felt like they didn't know how to respond, because they didn't know what they were responding to. And so, I think there are some challenges getting to the numbers, and we've got to make some efforts, and I know efforts will be made to kind of get as many people involved as many that, and I know this will probably happen at some point, that identifying the schools that were in the report earlier that are diverse would be helpful, so we know which schools we're talking about, so we can compare those to the other schools that are below and above that metric, so we can see just what difference does it make in our own district, not just in, you know, papers that have been submitted to people in various settings. Which leads me to a second question that I do think is related, and that's the discussion on Ashley tonight. So, as I looked at the Agenda Item tonight, I thought, well, okay, we're gonna look at $700,000 to do some design work, and the more I drilled down, the more I realized, wait a minute, it looks like we're gonna be talking about $46 million tonight. I think everybody needs to know that, that needs to be clarified, I think there needs to be some, at least some conversation and sharing about the 2016 bond and what projects are not being completed, as we complete one that was not on the bond. Potentially, it still would have to be approved by commissioners. I just think there's some questions there, and how does it fit into the whole Fostering Diversity Grant? How does that type of a project fit into that, as we think about a school build of almost $50 million, with schools like, you know, Con Oak, I mean, not Con Oak, but Cook, and Ashley, and Kimberley Park, you know, and Brunson, all with under 400 students, and all sitting around on top of each other. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ron DeMaze.
Good evening, Chairwoman Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, the Board, and Superintendent McManus. I'm here to talk about the Open Gate Metal Detectors System. As what was already said previously by a parent, we don't want to get to the point of feeling as though this is solving the issue, and this is totally what safety is. I'm glad to see that you're looking at a system where it's not gonna take so much staff time and power in order to get the students through the system, but this is only one layer. When I was looking at the PowerPoint, I noticed that you did mention many multiple layers, which are the cameras, the keypads, the fencing, Say Something, and the response protocol, students being involved, and I like to say family engagement, because when we use parent, that limits who you're talking about, because everyone raising a child is not necessarily the parent. And then the Open Gate system, we need to make certain that we also think about the staff, about how students are being supported, as well as the staff are being supported when we talk about safety as well, because the detectors alone will not solve our issue with safety. As the parent already stated, you have situations where people may circumvent that system, no matter how hard we try. That's why it's important for us to have those relationships with our students, that's why it's important to have the Student Services personnel in place in order to support the students, to help them to find other ways to handle situations rather than resorting to weaponry. So, please make certain when you're looking at this, we're not just stopping with this infrastructure, but we are also taking in consideration the social-emotional stance with the students, and to help them to find other ways of handling situations that they're confronted with. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Christine Sutter.
Good evening. My name is Christine Sutter, and I am the parent of two students in Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. To date, I have completed the Fostering Diverse Schools Survey, and also attended two different listening sessions. At each listening session, there was extensive discussion and unwavering support for our students' academic success, but also concern that this project may not lead to further academic achievement. Recognizing the need to focus on academic achievement for the students' benefit and also the long-term benefit of our community, I have two questions. First, how does the Fostering Diverse Schools Initiative specifically support immediate and also sustained academic achievement for all students in the district? Second, what academic outcomes can parents and community members expect from a redistricting effort? I appreciate your time tonight, thank you.
Thank you. We have five items for discussion tonight. The first, Melissa Agee, Director of the K-12 ELA, will give us a 2024 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Summer Program Update.
Good evening, Distinguished Board, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, and Superintendent McManus. This evening, we're excited to provide a wrap-up on the C summer learning program from this past summer, and highlight several items, including how deeper learning was utilized in the program. And just a quick recap of our summer program goals, we aim to create joy and exploration through our enrichment experiences, provide targeted interventions to our students who need it most, reduce the impact of the summer slide, and continue to cultivate the durable skills found in the North Carolina Portrait of a Graduate. So, this time, I want to turn things over to my colleagues, who are gonna talk about deeper learning.
Good evening. So, I am happy to be able to continue the positive notes and what we experienced during summer school. It was a bit different this summer, and we were a little nervous at first, but it turned out, I think, very well. So, our middle school students did something a little bit different, they didn't do multiple choice, there was no test, but what they did do was look at education, which is very relevant to them. They first started with an inquiry-based research project, where they looked at the past of education, how it impacted certain groups, they got to choose the group that they worked with, they researched, looked at how people were affected by having or not having education, and what are those implications still today? So, you can see, there were four groups, students could also choose others, we did the American Indians, African-Americans, women, and immigrants. So, they looked at the past of education, comparing it to what did they face today, what opportunities did these same groups have today? That led to them talking and thinking about their own careers, even though they are in middle school, high school goes quickly, and so, we paired with CTE and Student Services to give them a career survey, where they could delve into, here's what I'm interested in, here's what I like to do, what can I do for a job? And that turned into a career panel that came and spoke with the students about what they need to do to finish school and be prepared for a job. And then last, probably most interesting for us, was they created the Future Schools. A couple of you joined us on those, they decided, what are the problems with the schools, and how do we fix those problems? So, we're gonna look at the career panel first, and then Courtney is gonna talk to you about their future schools. So, Kevin, if you will cue our video. This video shows, gives a little bit of detail about the panel, it features my wonderful ELA coach, Brad Rhimes, making his video debut this afternoon, he'll be in the parking lot signing autographs.
Kids are doing a little bit of an out-of-the-box deeper learning with looking at building, their project is building a future school, and considering their career goals, maybe one day, starting to think about those, they're looking at how education has progressed from the past, the present, and then how it might fit their future.
It's kind of the same thing with my job.
So, today, we invited a panel in from various fields of study and various careers, and we've asked them to speak to the kids about their own experience, not just what inspired them, but also some skills that it took to take to get there.
I think I'm more excited than they are, because these are moments that really changes the world. You know, when a person of status comes back, when a leader in the community comes back to tell the kids that they can do it too, that's what this is all about.
They can start teaching other people how to fly airplanes as well.
So, as kids think about their middle school and high school career and in the future, they're learning basically from the experts who've already kind of blazed the path before them, to kind of see what it might take for them to be successful as well.
So, that was their career panel, and I'm gonna turn it over to Courtney, the Director for Social Studies, to talk about the future school component.
So, as we began to brainstorm as a collaborative effort, our teams had the opportunity to collaborate and dig into how to create a deeper learning experience for our students. So, not only were they practicing their skills, we had an opportunity to practice ours as well. So, we worked on a project that asked our students to develop a school for the future. If you want to go, we can show you some pictures of their final product while I speak. They were asked with, what should school look like? So, they needed to think about all of the requirements, and that's where we started, what are the laws that say this is what school has to be? And then they began to dream about what it could be. So, within the parameters that they were given, they began to investigate, what should the physical environment look like? What should a classroom experience be? What should the courses look like? How should we learn? How should the teachers teach us? They then presented their findings and their design for a future school to an authentic audience of education leaders. So, they collaborated, they practiced their communication skills, and they most definitely did some critical thinking. Our students came up with some amazing ideas, and we took good notes, so it was a fabulous experience.
Thank you, Courtney. So, a quick recap by the numbers, the C program served almost 2,500 students over the 16 days in the summer, with over 1,000 students attending over 80% of the days, and that was at 11 C sites, however, through the various summer programs, we actually utilized over 20 sites. We hired over 300 staff. Students in their responses to their survey indicated they attended a significant portion of the program, three to four weeks, and 41% of C students in grades K through 3 who completed the DIBELS assessment tested at or above benchmark. So, aside from the report, anecdotally, we received many positive praise and feedback based on the program in the areas of communication, organization, providing a positive work environment. Our site administrators were absolutely fantastic, doing activities with the kids and creating their own ways to make just the whole experience a wonderful experience for both staff and students. A lot of praise for the curriculum, the lesson plans, the enrichment, class sizes were manageable for individualized instruction, and it was just an overall well-rounded experience. And the team is excited to take away some suggestions for improvement, incentives for student attendance, and actually, our site administrators did do this, but we could continue to explore how we can incentivize attendance, tightening up some processes with the registration, maybe site preferences for teachers, more options to broaden the professional development that's offered in the workdays, allowing schools to recommend students, training documents. Training documents for late hires, that's a great one that the team is absolutely working on now, so we can have that ready. Standardized class rosters for reporting, and I think the length of day was quite a bit long for everybody, so that one came up as well. And for our next steps, the team is excited to, we've already gotten to work with debriefing with providers. That's going on over the next couple of months with debriefing with various groups. The staff, who were just a wonderful team in making this happen. Site administrators and the extended learning team is now going to look into continuing our research on best practices for summer learning, collaborating with our partners such as the District Summer Learning Network, and seeking professional development, so we can get better at what we're doing to provide the best possible experience for our students in the summer. So with that, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Board Member Kuhn.
First, I want to say, I think it's awesome that the hands-on project was something that we could actually probably use to help us guide our work. So thank you for that. One question I did have, though, is I know a number of students maybe didn't make it to C or maybe didn't make it the whole time. Did we dig into the whys behind that to see how we can overcome it next year?
That is a great question. So first of all, let me go a little bit further back in time. So what we did do, we didn't, so as a staff and as site administrators, we did not just sit on that. So when students were showing up, we were calling. And we actually had some great success, especially, I think Petrie really did a great job with enrollment. Some of that, just from their words, was just communication and just misunderstandings, that kind of thing. Things that happened in the summer, which is why it's important that we touch base and make sure that we, that the students know and the parents know that, hey, this is going on, we want you to come, just like now. We want you to come to school, make sure that you're there. I would have to dig into, with the department, the Accountability Department, to see if there was any mention of that. I can't answer that at the moment, but I'd be happy to get back to you on that if there's any more in the why behind that.
Board Member Brown Gaither.
I'm glad you asked that question, because that was one of my questions. My other one was, do we have a breakdown by school and grade level of all the schools that participated, or since, I shouldn't say participated, that had students to participate? Because there's some schools out there that did not have any students participate, and then did we look at why?
We can, we can provide that for you. We have absolutely, what, from what schools across the district, how many students, we can, that is something we can provide for you.
I would like to see that.
Absolutely. I'll make note of that.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Next, Jonathan Wilson, our Chief Safety, Security, and Emergency Management Officer, will discuss the Open Gate Weapons Detection.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Board, Superintendent McManus. If you remember last board meeting, while Superintendent McManus was giving her superintendent update, then I was asked to kind of give you guys an update on the Open Gate system, how the pilot was going, to answer some questions about potential cost implications, especially around sustainability for the Open Gate system. And so, my advance on this, Kevin? So, if anybody's had a chance to go see Open, hadn't had a chance to go see Open Gate, basically, that's what it is, is two columns. And this is, this is not just traditional metal detecting, this is a weapons detection system. So let me just start off and do the first slide here, and I want to hand this over to my partners here in blue. Believe it or not, this was not a plan. We're just, great minds think alike. We're on the same page. We do this all the time, honestly. So, just how we got here. If you guys remember, several years ago, when I first addressed this board and the previous board about security, I was not a big proponent of metal detecting. I've never been a big proponent of metal detecting, for some of the reasons that you may have heard tonight from parents and from others. But things have changed. And so I think as, as a leader, I have to look at what I thought was true in the past and change. And I always thought, and I do this as I get older, I started out thinking that I knew how things should be, and this is how things were going to go. And I think as we learn and we adapt to the new changing times that we now live in, that we have to, we have to adjust. And that's where we find ourselves today. Back in 2022, we started using the traditional walkthrough metal detectors, and although they work, they work honestly too good, because we find everything, from fingernail files to, I mean, we could find bobby pins if we wanted to, but it just really is a cumbersome situation. So Rhonda stole my, stole my first slide, and so she basically said the same thing. There's no one thing that is going to solve our problem. It has to be a multi-layered approach. And our multi-layered approach is cameras, it's fencing, it's keypads, it's our SRO program, it's our Say Something anonymous tip line, it's our standard response protocols, it's our student and parent engagement, it's all these things. And Open Gate is, to me, what appears to be the next step, because I do not want our schools to feel like it's a prison. I do not want it to feel like we're institutionalizing children when they walk through the door. But Open Gate is not that feeling, and if you've seen it, you know that that's not the case. And so, honestly, here in the back of the room, I got, I see at least three principals here who have tested Open Gate system, and I think that each one of those probably could give you some testimonials. Bridgette Hayes at North, Scott Munsey at Glenn, Brad Royal at Reagan, and the two principals from Parkland cannot be here tonight, I think, but I think they've probably spoken to you guys about what they've seen and how they support what they've seen with Open Gate. So with that said, I will say that the first, we've been doing Open Gate since school started this year, and it's been, it's been very successful. And so with that, I want to hand this over to Chad, Chad Williamson. If you haven't met Chad, he's a great addition to our team, and I won't introduce Brent, he can do that, but he's an okay addition to our team. No, right. These are two great guys, and I feel, I feel honored to work with them. They bring a lot of experience. We're just talking, just amongst us three, you're probably looking at about 80 years of experience. And so it kind of shows on my face, the 80 years, but we're doing our very best to keep the school system safe. So I'll let Chad take it away from here.
Great, thank you. So yeah, it's blue shirt and beard night, so we do what we can. So, just kind of expanding a little bit on what Jonathan was talking about as far as the Open Gate system and what we're doing. The biggest thing that we've seen is that the system is fast, it's automatic, and it's unprecedented screening. The days of walking through a traditional metal detector, having students line up outside in the rain, in the cold, in the heat, and having to wait to come through a metal detector one by one, where it's going to take an hour to get them in, are over with this system. You are literally walking through at a normal pace. Nobody is stopping you, nobody is, is having to search every bag, we're not having the stress, we're not having what so many people have traditionally seen as we've used metal detector systems in the past. It's no divesting of backpacks, purses, and bags. So when you're walking through the Open Gate system, you're literally walking through the system with your backpack on, your bags in your hand, your lunch boxes, whatever it is that you're carrying, you're walking through the system with all of that still on your back. Because the system is designed to pick up certain amounts of metal and things that we are setting the system to look for. So instead of having to pass off your bag, go through a metal detector, wait for a teacher or administrator to look through all of your personal property that you bring to school, we don't do that anymore. You simply walk through with your bag. If the system doesn't detect the metal, then you continue to walk through. Right now, we're hitting on about a 10% search rate. So we have 100 students that come through, we're going to search 10 bags. Most of what we're seeing is that the student is still carrying a three-ring binder, or they have a Chromebook still in their bag, or they simply turn too quick and they're hitting the pole, and that's what's alerting and making us have to do a search. The extreme transit flow or throughput at an average of 300 per 15 minutes. What that means is that we can get 300 students through each tower in 15 minutes. So we are running right now with four towers or four groups of towers. You can do the math, just at the front doors alone, in a 15-minute span, we can get 600 students through, when everybody is trained and doing what it is that they're supposed to do. The great thing is, these are battery-powered. So we can literally pick them up, they weigh about 20, 25 pounds apiece, we can pick them up, take them anywhere that we want to go. If we want to have them set at the front door, then we can have it at the front door. If we want it at the side door, we can do it there. If we decided that, you know what, we're not really convinced that we have searched the way that we need to search, or there is a safety concern somewhere in the school and we need to search a classroom, we simply pick it up, take it to the classroom, and have everybody in the classroom walk through, if that's what we feel like we need to do or the school administrators feel like that they need to do. So we're not looking for power cords, we're not looking for a plug in the wall, we're not having to worry about all that. It's battery-powered the same way that you have with a drill or any of your modern power tools. These systems are ready for anything. We can use them indoor and outdoor. Again, we can move them anywhere in the school that we want to move them to. If we're having an event outside, football game, we can take them out to the football game, we simply take them outside, put them at the gate, turn them on, we're set to go. So when the game is over, we can bring them back in, set them up, you're ready to go for the next school day. So we're not having to buy multiple systems and stage them at different places around the school. And that gives us that kind of flexibility. They're quick to set up and install. Again, they only weigh 25 pounds, and it takes about one minute to set them up. They each have a power switch. We can control what the settings are by an app that we have on our phone. The system is simply going to power up, it's going to look for the setting that we have it set on, and you're ready to go. Oops, wrong way. The traditional detectors require searching each bag, which you all know is labor-intensive, takes staff away from their normal duties, and the staff aren't comfortable in this environment. And we don't expect them to be. We're asking them to do something that is, is much greater than what they ever signed on to do. So again, we know that the traditional searches have been very labor-intensive. I've done them. I've done more searches than I can possibly count on my hands and have come out at the end of an hour search dripping in sweat, just simply trying to move students in and trying to look in every bag. We want the teachers and we want the staff to engage in the students, we want them to be in the schools, we want them to be in the hallways, we want them to be in their classrooms or in the cafeteria where they can engage the students. We don't want them standing at a table, having to search bags and having to monitor children going through a metal detector. We've all heard the stories about how uncomfortable it makes the staff. We realize that it makes them uncomfortable. We realize that we're asking them to put their hands in bags and possibly find a weapon. Nobody wants to do that. This system cuts down on that dramatically. It's going to take five to six staff members for each traditional unit. We believe that we can operate that with about three. And it's very simple. You have the towers, as the students approach, the students take out their Chromebook or the three-ring binders, whatever it is that they have, they simply pass it to an administrator or a teacher who is standing beside it, who takes it and passes it back when they go through. So that's one. You have one person watching towers to make sure that the towers aren't alerting, and then you have one person that may have to do a secondary search. If something in the bag alerts, then you have one person that's doing a secondary search. So you're going from systems that require, in high schools and middle schools, easily 20-plus personnel, to systems that we can run with three to four at each entry. So it allows that, those teachers and staffs and the administrative group to be in the school, engaging the students where they need to be. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brent Cook.
Thank you, Chad. All right, so this is just a little bit of the nuts and bolts. You guys wanted more details about the units, sustainability, things like that. So they have a two-year warranty. We also mentioned the batteries. So these batteries are Milwaukee Drill Batteries, you can buy at Home Depot. So the system design, it's not proprietary equipment that drives it, which, which we really like, because it would make sense to buy something and you got to have a $700 battery. So you can go to Home Depot and buy these batteries. It's a Milwaukee, literally a Milwaukee Drill Battery. We did our homework, and I know we've talked before, that's why we did a pilot. You know, we watched the demo, we had the company come in and do the demo, we had the sheriff's office out. They came in and did the demo with us to see if, if they felt like it was going to do what it said it was going to do. And it did, of course, at a demo, but as you know, it's a demo. It's going to work at the demo. You got the company guy here. So I still wasn't sold. We went to Rockingham County, they're using them. We spent a whole morning at a middle school up there, watched it, talked to the staff, talked to the principal. I mean, they were saying, yes, it works, we're watching kids come in and out. Still not sold. So we tried to get the pilot. I want to try it before we come and ask for a big, a big ask of money, and we're pleased with it. LJVM has been using them since 2022, I think. They've had no equipment failures, no battery failures, and they carry theirs around to all their different facilities, to the stadium, to the Coliseum. So we checked around with a lot of people that are actually using it before we would kind of sign on to say, this is what it is. Like Chad said, it's 90% faster than a traditional metal detector. They just are. I mean, it's amazing, the stuff that they can do. It's, it's a metal detector. It's just a smart metal detector. It's like taking a flip phone versus your iPhone. I mean, it's doing the same thing, but it's doing it a lot better and a lot faster. So it's looking for concentrations of metal that are, that make a profile. It's not like an X-ray machine or anything, it's just, it's got logic built into it. And this company's been doing this forever. And like Chad said, we're doing it at a 10% alarm rate, so that means, you know, like he said, that's 10% of the people that are setting it off. But again, they could be setting it off, because if you come through and turn and you bump the pole, it's going to go off. So the first day, we usually see about a 20%, and then it drops the second day, because people understand how to do it. Now we come down to this. So we had, we had a quote for 102 units. They come with four batteries, they come with the chargers, each, each station does. The stabilizing base plates, so what those are for are for the outdoor events, like what Jonathan and Chad mentioned. The units are so lightweight to carry around that you can't really effectively use them outside without these plates that they kind of, it gives it a little more weight. It's basically like sitting a sandbag down on top of it. Because, you know, I mean, they're light enough to where in the wind it could move them. Actually, it did it at Parkland. We had them sitting outside for that press conference, and the wind would blow and they would, if they vary, they start beeping. The test pieces, it's a calibration piece. It's basically a thing that's, that's set by a governmental standard on metal detection, and you have to have that piece to verify it's working. Our other metal detectors, we could check if it was working. You walk through with a cell phone, it's going to go off. These won't. So this test piece, every, every morning, you walk through them with the piece, and if it goes off, you know that, that everything is calibrated right. You can see the tags of shipping and all that stuff. So there's no recurring cost on these units. So there's no subscription cost, we buy them. I mean, other than maybe replacing a battery, LJVM has never had to do it, but that would be the only recurring cost. There is a software monitoring package that the company kind of gave us for three months that we can go, we can look online and see all the units and all of their statistics every day. That's how we know it's 10% alarm rate. That's how we know how many are getting through. Like now at Reagan, I can tell you, they had, total today, we had like 3,600 students that came through the two schools, and I can tell which unit did it. We would like that software, it's a little pricey. They gave it to us, because that's the only way I could verify this pilot is worth asking for. So that would be the only recurring cause, is if we opted in for that kind of data package. So with that, the list price on it is about $1,000 per unit per year, but that's the list price, and the list price is a lot different than what, what we can get if we decide to do the full package. Yeah, we're not asking for any of that now. We're, you know, that's, that's a, that's a wish. The company, they gave it to us for three months to verify this pilot, because without it, we wouldn't be able to tell any of this information. So anyway, those questions now.
Board Member Kuhn.
First, I want to say, I think I've, I've kind of teetered on the whether I believe in metal detectors, or I do not believe in metal detectors. I believe that there's a lot that has to be done in addition to. However, having watched the Open Gate and talked to my daughter, who is at a high school, I asked, you know, do you feel like you're going through a metal detector when you go to the school? And the answer was no. And so I asked some other folks, and they feel like that it is a no as well, that they don't actually feel like they're going through a metal detector. With that said, I am still, I guess this is more of a statement and for discussion for us, I'm still... I'm still concerned about the financial side of it and investing that much money into them. So.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
So I have a few questions. So first, um, Mr. Wilson, you, when you first started your presentation, you had mentioned that at one point previously, you had, you know, some feelings about metal detection and that things have changed. So I want, what specifically has changed relative to your outlook on metal detection?
To me, society has changed. The, the feeling of parents when they send their students to school has changed. The way students feel about going to school has changed. And so I, I don't know, was that pandemic related? I mean, I'm tired of hearing about the pandemic, so I hope not. But I definitely think that, um, the world has changed. I mean, I talked to you last week and it's hard to go to a show. I had tickets to the Tanger. I go to Appalachian State football. I go to all over the place and I go through metal detectors. There's, there's a big difference in going to a football game or going to a show because they make money. We don't make money. Um, and so it's, it's also much easier to secure a stadium than it is to secure a, a school with multiple doors. I mean, as many, um, the courthouse is secured with metal detectors, but there's two points of entry at the courthouse. So all these other places are, are in some ways, even though they're larger, they're easier to secure. We can, we've talked about it amongst our team. We can make schools, we can secure the school. We can secure the school as tight as we want to be, but it's going to feel like parents don't want it to feel. I don't want my kids to feel like they're going to school. So I guess my angst, um, Vice Chair Bohannon, in the past was, it's what did I want the perception to be? And so I still don't like the perception of the metal detecting, the way we do it with traditional metal detecting. I just don't like the feel of it. And I know that our teachers don't like the feel of it. Principals don't like the way it gets their kids into school late, but I think that this does not feel the same way. And so that, that is kind of what's changed. Just by, it's, it's the perception and the reality of what the world is today. And, and, and I do want to say this. Uh, first off, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Captain Hammons was here and Sheriff Kimbrough, uh, and our, and Chief Penn and, and Chief Tilly have, have expressed their desire to see metal detectors in schools. And Captain Hammons is here in support today. But what I would say is even our random metal detection, anecdotally, shows that it's worked. Because the amount of weapons that we have found in schools since we started metal detecting has gone down. It has. Uh, at the end of last school year, we spiked up with a couple of things that we found in school. And so then we really went hardcore. We were like, no, we're not doing this again. And so we really beefed it up and we put our central office staff out where they were going to schools every single day. We couldn't get things done at central office because we were spending our mornings in the school, even though I love Brad Royal, he didn't want to see me every day. And so it was just, things changed. And so, uh, I mean, I guess that's the best answer I can give you.
Okay. Um, and, and so I think, are we, I guess, is the, is the thought of you and your staff that if we would move to a place if we somehow found the money to purchase Open Gate, that we would be using Open Gate every single day?
Yes, sir.
And that's the recommendation? That like if we had the money, that if we would utilize Open Gate every single day?
If we had the money, then we would use Open Gate every single day. And I think those three principals, they can shake their head. It would not interfere with their school day. Is that right?
Well, and I'm, I'm sure because I've seen it, like versus traditional metal detection. I'm sure that given the choice between the utilization of Open Gate and traditional metal detection, that obviously there's a preference. For me, it's more so about like looking at, I guess, the decisions we've made relative to where to invest money historically. So I know that at least dating back since, I mean, I think we got a, we got a safety grant probably in 2019. We, we've had several safety grants kind of since then and we've sort of made a decision to utilize those funds. I think we bought 70 something traditional metal detectors first. And then we came back in May of '23 and we got another 90 something traditional metal detectors. And we've been utilizing those. And I guess a question for me in terms of just from a fiscal standpoint is, what was, why did we go with traditional metal detection and not this system at first?
Uh, I mean, honestly, there's a couple of reasons. Number one is those other metal detectors are $2,700 a piece versus this, which these turned out to be about $16,000, $20,000 if we weren't probably buying them in bulk. Um, but those were $2,700. I honestly didn't think that, I thought that the random metal detection would, would be sufficient. I, I, we didn't know what it was going to take to put, to put an entire school staff at work to do this every day. If we did metal detecting at every single school, middle and high, using traditional metal detectors every day, we're looking at 1,200 to 1,500 staff members for that hour that we're doing metal detecting. Uh, we, I can't, we can't give you 1,500 teachers and staff members every single day. We can't hire enough show pros. We can't hire enough rhinos. We can't hire enough people. There's just not enough people who was willing to be come out and work for whatever we could pay them for an hour to do metal detecting. There's just not enough staff to do it. And so we either have to make a decision whether we're going to continue to do something like random and, and, and hope that it continues to deter and be a, and be a, and be a deterrent to, to, to someone bringing it. Or we have to do something every day that makes people feel safer and is safer. Is it 100%? Absolutely not. I mean, it's the other things that has to go with it, but that's the one piece that we don't have to focus our time on. We can do this at the front door while those principals can focus on greeting their kids and other places and building those relationships and then seeing what else is going on inside the building so that we don't get to this point. I don't want to find another weapon in these schools. I, I, I've told you guys, I've, I've been a long time at this career and I've looked, I was, I told you last week, I was a lot, you know, better looking a few years ago. But I can't continue to find weapons in schools.
Okay. Um, Susan Miller?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. Mr. Wilson, I am very impressed with the work that you and your team do. I can feel your passion and your commitment to the safety of our students. And you've obviously done your homework. I'm 100% behind you in Open Gate weapons detection.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, Board Member Crowley?
Yeah, um, Jonathan, I think, I think the big takeaway is this, this is one piece of the security solution. And there is no just one piece that will solve all this issue. Um, in talking to a student this morning, uh, she told me she arrived at school at 8:45 and didn't get into her first period classroom until 9:20, going through the traditional metal detector, not Open Gate. Um, and in a time where we keep telling our students, our staff and our families that every minute counts, um, this is, the current system we're doing is running contrary to that. Um, and I just think it's important that we keep evolving through this process because the threats are going to continue to change and quite frankly, the kids get savvier. And, you know, even with, even with Open Gate, um, you know, we were talking about different schools that have over 100 exterior doors. Um, there's going to have to be other things that we're doing where we, where we're staying a step ahead, where we're doing, I mean, I've heard more students say that they thought one, one, uh, thing that could be very effective is doing random weapons checks in the classroom. Um, you know, go through and randomly wand every kid in the classroom and see what's, you know, I don't even know if that's legal, honestly. But, um, but they know, they hear kids talk. They see what kids are doing. They see kids walk up to school, the metal detector's up there. They do a 180 and they head right back down the street or to their car or whatever, because they, they know that we're checking that day. Um, you know, again, with the exterior doors, you've got kids that can stash them behind a trash can, stash something in the bushes. Um, you know, a lot of our, a lot of our campuses are pretty open and they can, because they're going from building to building and there's multiple opportunities there for somebody to drive up and hand a kid something or for them to retrieve it some, from somewhere. So I just think that, I applaud you on this. Uh, I think we're never going to have the right answer. It's always going to be an evolution and process and we just have to be committed to it if, if safety is primary for us.
So can I just, can I make a one comment on that? So I, I would say that I would like to tell you that I had something that would be 100% every single day. But I can tell you that at TSA, in some airports, they have a list of the weapons that they find at airports. So things still get through, things still happen. And if I had that magic bullet, then I wouldn't be standing here. I'd be making a whole lot of money somewhere else. But, but, but we, but that's the fact. And so, but yes, it is, this is one piece of that.
Yes, Board Member Barr.
Yeah, Jonathan, I wanted to say I'm glad to hear your recommendation. I'm definitely pro metal detectors in, in the school system. But also I think I like the Open Gate. But I think my question is concerning sustainability. Um, I think a price that you guys for, gave for 102 units was 1, 1.8 million dollars. Is that correct?
Yeah, it was, well, with the metal detectors themselves, it was like 1.6, was it? Not, uh, sorry. Yeah, if for the metal detectors themselves, it was 1.7. But we put everything else with it, then it's at 1.8. Yes, sir.
Okay, does that include, because I think someone mentioned the software that was 1,000 per unit per year?
So, so that does not, that does not include the software, but we are not asking for the software. We're saying that we would love to have the software. I think it's great. But what we're saying is that we will, it's not, it is, it is not required to run the unit. The only thing that's required to run the unit is a cell phone app that we have where we can adjust the settings and the test piece to calibrate it. That is not needed. That's the only, but that's just the way we can give statistics. So if you ask me if we ran these for, for a month and then you say, well, what was your alarm rate? I can't tell you. We can just be, and tell you, we can get the kids in on time, but I can't tell you what the alarm rate was specifically. So it, it's not needed and we're not asking for it. It's just something that some future chief of security may ask another board for, but it won't be me.
Yes, Board Member Brown Gaither.
Okay. And I know you have the battery down here, but in, if, in the case that we need additional batteries, the four that they give you per unit. And I just looked it up online to see what that would be just from, if I went to go and purchase one. It looked like it was about $28. And I was just, the school system you said that are using it, they have never had to replace the batteries other than the ones that were given with the units.
Yeah, the LJVM is the one that's used this system the longest of, of our local partners. And, and we have a really good working relationship with them because of graduation and, and that's kind of where we saw them first. Um, yeah, they've never had to replace a battery. They've never have. I mean.
But I think the one you're looking at might not be the right battery because we priced them the other day for about 150.
Yeah, these are really, really big. But it's like the one that you would put in your weed eater, like if you had a cordless weed eater, it's the big one.
Because I looked at a drill.
Yeah, if you look at that one, it would run on it, but it would probably go dead and, you know, this one's a big moth, these things are, are.
And then it's, how many charges do you usually?
You get, so with each, each set of towers, they come with four batteries and a multi-bank charger.
Right.
So it charges two batteries at a time.
Board Member Watts?
Jonathan, would you elaborate a little more on the settings, please, and how you can defer the settings based on? And what circumstance would you change your settings?
Yeah, so, so just like with our traditional metal detectors, they have different levels of sensitivity on it. This one is the same thing. So you can, you can turn this thing down to where you can't walk through with a paper clip in your pocket and it's going to go off. But there are certain standards that have been defined, uh, the federal government on, on weapons detection and those type of standards. So, um, you can look for either, either a, a large weapon or a small weapon. And so those are the settings that we kind of adjust back and forth to find what, what, because that's what Captain Ammons came out and we went through with a lot of, of different things that they may be carrying to see what we can pick up. And then you find the right setting for you. This company's actually developed several settings just for schools because they know what kids are going to be carrying and what it needs to kind of not look for versus looking for. Like it's going to go off some, on an umbrella. I mean, because the umbrella has the profile, obviously. It's a metal tube inside the umbrella of, of looking like a weapon. There are certain things that are going to go off, like Chromebooks, things like that, anything with a, with a big hinge, um, because it looks like a big long blade to the, to the detector. So those are the settings that we're talking about kind of changing them and we find out kind of the sweet spot. And that's what we did with, with Captain Ammons is we kind of found the sweet spot of what you, what you wanted to catch before you didn't want it so tight that it did go off every single time where somebody might have a big wad of keys. You don't want it to go off on that. So that's what it is.
So we were talking about taking them to the classrooms. Have you tried that and serve our buildings already?
We've done it.
Random searches in the classrooms?
The traditional metal detectors. They, some schools have done that.
Right. Also using the Open Gate as a, in the, as an entry to the classroom?
Uh, no, we haven't done that. When he meant random, that would be where, you know, right now with our traditionals, they may take it to a classroom and say, okay, everybody leave your bags in the classroom. Come walk through these. We're going to search your bags. It's just a random spot check.
But we could take the Open Gate.
You could take these, yes.
And, and so, Board Member Watts, what I do want to say is even when Open Gate came out and talked to us, the vendor, and he was very helpful. I mean, he's gone all over the country and all over the world to train. And what he said that a lot of school districts are doing, uh, is that they're using the Open Gates daily to find weapons or, or to, to, to prevent weapons from coming into the school. But if they wanted to go find vapes, then they would take the, and we're not looking for vapes. But I mean, if you want to find vapes and you want to find other things, then you could take the old traditional metal detectors down and, and, and use those, or you turn these down, change the settings to where they become, just like the old traditional and, and do that same thing. So it just depends on how much you want to, how much, how intrusive you want to be and how detailed you want to find stuff.
And I just want to add a comment. I've saw, I've been to Parkland, Reynolds, and north outside. I didn't go inside to your building, but I was outside and, um, kudos.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Bohannon.
So I think, um, since a couple of the board members have made comments, I just, I just, I, I, having seen Open Gate, like the efficiency to me alone is enough, I feel like, to support the purchase. I think that, and I think the other piece too is like, nobody ever wants to be the person to question an item that potentially is for security. But our reality and sort of what I come back to is the fact that we're a public school system that doesn't have unlimited dollars and, and has, I think, a variety of different needs that continue to go unmet year after year. And we have to look at budgeting and we have to take what we get and then apply it to where we can and then make the best decision with the limited resources that we have. And I think that, you know, to me, when it comes to security and safety, it's almost like sort of where you started the presentation with, which is that there's nothing that is going to be the silver bullet that's going to make everybody all of a sudden feel like, oh my gosh, I have nothing. I have no other concerns with the safety of students. This purchase we've made right here has solved all of my issues. And I think that if we had a generous benefactor who had the money to pay for this system, I would, uh, be like, thank you so much and we could, we could solve all of our problems. But I think that where we, where we are, I guess in my opinion is we have to be intentional about finding a source for this purchase um, that doesn't put us in, I think, a position where we're using funds that we could potentially be put in a position where if we had some sort of emergency, then these funds wouldn't be available. And so I think that maybe the next steps are identifying potential funding sources for how to purchase this, if that's what we want to do.
Board Member Crowley?
Yeah, I'd like us to explore grant options and also looking at our fund balance. And, but I, I think we need to prioritize this. Um, and again, this, safety is number one. We can't say our number one priority is to keep our students safe and then sit on millions of dollars and not spend it on keeping our students safe. Um, so, uh, what are we doing to, to find funds for this? Either through, you know, grants or?
So the 24, 25 school safety grant opens up when? It is open now. We are making the maximum request to get, is, they've capped the, they've capped the maximum request this year at $500,000. So we are asking for $500,000 to go towards it. I think that the request may be, uh, where we can only ask for middle school funding this year, I think. Uh, the state legislature or the Skinner for Safer Schools did not say in the past few years that you had to use it for any particular level. But this year they're saying that you have to ask for money for middle schools. So what we would then do is ask for $500,000, uh, to, to assist with safety in our middle schools. And then that would leave us, uh, looking for money for the high schools and then some additional. So I mean, the breakdown, I, I probably have, well, I actually do have it here in my notes to say, uh, middle schools would cost us about $940,000 and then high schools would cost us the, the balance. And so, so we're, we're continuing to look for the money. And again, I'll start a GoFundMe if need be, but.
Board Member Barr?
Yeah, you know, I don't think we have to do GoFundMe. I think to me, this rises to the occasion of while we have a fund balance because of situations that can come up like this. And, um, to me, that's, that is priority.
Board Member Kuhn?
Um, I do believe that we need to explore, um, how to fund this. Um, before, um, we talk about fund balance, I really think we need to sit down in a finance committee or some. or some, at some point, to discuss where we really are with our fund balance, because we've heard several different numbers, and we've had other discussions about other dollars, are the dollars being used for other things. So I just want to note that I think we need to have a, a conversation about fund balance before we think that fund balance might be the answer.
We, I will say that I spoke to Tommy earlier about this, and he should be able to, like, we knew we ended last year, last school year, the last presentation with the board, I think we were at about 7 million, so we've been waiting on, is there anything left more for this year? Tommy is getting closer to year end. I think the auditors are in next week. Is that what you?
We've begun field work, and they'll be in the office tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Finish the field work by the end of next week, and then about a week for us to finalize our.
So in the next couple of weeks, you would have a better knowledge of exactly what would be in fund balance at the end of, from the end of last school year?
Correct. And remember, fund balance is nothing but a math. It's assets, affordability, less accommodations, and that's our fund balance.
So one of the things with the board having the discussion tonight with support, it opens the door for us then to say, let's, let's start now trying to see what we can do with donations. I mean, we'll call Sheriff Kimbrough back again, I mean, he, the, our law enforcement partners, community members that we've started talking to informally, so we can start doing our part, knowing that we would have support of the board around donations. I, we didn't want to start doing anything until we had this discussion. And then in two weeks, Tommy would be able to give a better idea about where we are with additional funds in addition to the 7 million, if we have any to add, so.
Board Member Watts?
No, I was going to suggest the same thing. We've got a lot of great community partners, a lot of great people, engagement people in our community. Let's go to them and say, hey, this is a priority for our school system, you've been a partner for this 25 years, this is a priority, let's see what we can get there, and then maybe the fund balance will not be used as much, or maybe we can be able to find some way to take that money with the grant money and get to our end result. But I think we've got a lot of people out there who are willing to support this project, and maybe even, you know, some PTAs may want to donate some of their money to support this project. You know, there's some monies out there, so I would encourage us to go where we can to find the money.
Yes, Board Member Barr?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, and I understand what everyone is saying, that we just don't drag our feet on this, because we have to admit that we're in a different world, a lot of crazy things are going on, and we just want to make sure that we quickly do what we can do to, to protect our kids and our staff.
Any other questions? This has been a good discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Next, Dr. Effie McMillan, our Chief Equity Officer, and Frank Ventano, our Executive Director of Choice and Magnet Schools, will give us a fostering diverse schools grant update.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent McManus, and the Exteam Board. And so, yes, Frank and I are here with our update on our progress with the two-year planning grant with fostering diverse schools. So I'm going to turn it over to Frank in just a moment, but we do have our partners here with us from Urban Strategies and Plural Connections, so you'll also be hearing from them as well.
Hello, members of the board. Superintendent McManus? Yes, there we go. So I'm going to review some things that we've already discussed really quickly, just the purpose of this planning grant was always to create a comprehensive plan that aligns with the Board of Education's goals and Policy 5117, Assignment of Pupils, and then also to receive federal funding to help us with modernizing our current residential attendance zones. Go through that one quick. Oh, we're on the, there we go. At the end of this grant process, this two-year grant process delivers, we are going to want to have, what will we have in hand? Will be stakeholder-vetted models for modernizing our attendance zones, and a plan for the board to consider implementation of these models to do two main things, and that's foster greater diversity in our schools, but also increase the transportation efficiency of our current residential zones. So ran through those quick, because I wanted to get to the new information. We know we've heard a lot from our community, and we've heard a lot about what this process is and, and what people think it might be, and we want to make sure that we dispel any myths that are out there about, about what we're, we've been working on. So I'm going to start out with some facts. A fact is that the residential attendance boundaries in our district have not been comprehensively analyzed and updated since the early 1990s. This combats the myth that we've already developed a plan and we already have maps. We've not done that, we've not had any sort of new maps created for us, we don't have any plans, and we haven't looked at it in, like I said, over 30 years. Another important fact to know is that the majority of students in our district actually attend their residential zone. That kind of goes against the idea that if we were to change our residential boundaries, it's not going to matter, because we have a choice program. We do have a choice program, and I'm, as the Executive Director of Choice and Magnet, I love our choice program and our magnet programming, but it's important to note that 70% of all our students attend their residential schools, so that's really who this work is going to help first and foremost. Another fact to know is that our goal is to modernize our boundaries, to improve them in many ways, including transportation efficiency, feeder patterns, so that kids can stay with their friends going up from elementary to middle to high, and to increase diversity. And the myth is that because the name is fostering diverse schools, that our goal is only to increase diversity just for diversity's sake. That's not, not what this is, although there are some great things out there that shows that diversity does help our students learn and can affect learning outcomes in a positive way. Three more. So we are, the fact is that we're working to disrupt concentrations of poverty in our, in certain schools that we have, and the myth is that we want to disrupt the success that we have at some of our most popular schools. So we are very positive-minded, and we want to have our cake and eat it too. We don't think that any of this work is going to take away from any of our really successful schools, but we do want to make sure that the schools where there are concentrations of poverty, we're looking at how, how those current residential boundaries may be affecting those families. Another fact is that current students can remain in their schools through a grade span. So there's a myth and a fear, an unfounded fear, because as a parent, I would be worried too. Does this mean that my first grader is going to be told that they have to move away from all their kid, all their friends? No, current policy states that students can stay at their current school through the grade span. So even if we were to change these residential boundaries and move things around a little bit, we're still going to make sure that those students are able to stay with their group of friends and finish out the time there. So don't worry. And then another fact is that the contact information, emails, phone numbers, all the things that we're gathering to be able to get this feedback from the community, we're going to use it only for that purpose. We're just using it so that we can hear from the community. The myth is that the personal information is going to be shared with a third party for other uses. Of course, we would not do that. We are here to serve the community, so. Hand it back to Dr. McMillan.
Awesome. So we're going to talk about what our progress is so far, and in just a few moments, you're going to hear from our partners. And so, as we have shared with the board before, the two-year planning goes through four different phases. First phase is exploration and modeling. That is where we began to take a deep dive in understanding what our current landscape is. We're currently in Phase Two, which runs through December. So just to give you a little bit of what's been happening with Phase Two, we did a soft launch of our survey that many community, community members have received, all of them, as long as we have accurate email addresses, phone numbers. It's been communicated out quite frequently. So we started with a soft launch of the survey back in May, and we started with the student, Superintendent Student Advisory Council, and we started with the Superintendent's Parent Advisory Council. We started there because we built the survey based on alignment to the grant application and to the work that we were doing, and what we wanted to hope to hear from our community. And so we wanted to test it out first and refine it before it went to the masses. We've continued to communicate that survey over the course of the summer, and it's continuing to go out now. We did a soft launch this summer, too, of the facilitated conversations. Again, for the soft launch was to begin to engage some parents and community members. That has also helped us to improve our process. We are continuously gathering the feedback that comes out of those listening sessions. We have a meeting tomorrow, we're going to be talking again about what we're hearing, and how do we continue to improve the process to make sure that we are hearing the voices of constituents across the entire county. I will say that for this first phase of engagement, it truly is a listening session. We were very intentional about that phase, because it would be easy for us to just go and talk at the community, but we really wanted to listen to the community first. This conversation has not happened, as Frank said, before in 30 years plus. I think the latest really comprehensive change was around 1994, when the implementation happened. So we've had some minimal changes that have happened when a new school was built, like Louisville Middle. So some adjustments was made just to impact that one school, but to look at the landscape across the entire county has not happened, and we have not engaged in conversation on what this means to our community, what their understanding is around residential boundaries, and even what they think about it. So we're trying to get a pulse on the community with this first round of, of engagement. And so it really is a listening conversation, and we have our partner, Urban Strategy, that has been facilitating those conversations, because we wanted a neutral, unbiased party to do that. In continuation of that, we are continuing this first round through December. As I said before, there are multiple listening sessions that are scheduled between now and December that will be in-person and virtual. We are continuing to work with community partners around identifying locations for those in-person locations, so that we can actually go to the community versus asking the community to go to us. So we've been talking with church partners, the Y, a number of members across our community to first have space in their local community versus them coming to us, and planning those spaces out across the entire, entire district. A couple of other things that I will just say about the listening sessions is that we anticipated during the summer that we would kind of have low participation, and kids come back to school, parents start paying attention more, so we're starting to get more traction, and we're excited about that, even with the news releases, so that people know what's going on in the community, and that we are able to respond to their questions and get them involved. So we want them to be involved, and we want to hear their voice. The Phase Three is when we're going to go back with the plan. So right now, as Frank said, misinformation that's going around says we already have a plan and we have new maps drawn. Well, they won't be drawn until we really analyze the data, the inputs that we have from our community. So we will be bringing back a plan. I would anticipate around February, but the early part of 2025, and that is when we're going to come back to the community for a second round of engagement, where they will actually see what's being proposed, what the new models being proposed look like. They will be able to weigh in on those, and they will actually get to see how they may impact them or may not impact them. It may not change anything for them, but for other people, it might. So that will be the second round of input, and that will run through good second half of the year. The final piece is that we will come back with the community-vetted model to bring to the board. So it probably will be multiple models. Based on all that we share with the community during the second round of engagement, we're going to come back to say, here's what the community said, and here are the ones that they are most in favor of. All of that will be shared throughout the process. So that is, will be our last phase for consideration of which one that the board wants to vote on in terms of how we will move forward. I do want to just reiterate again, we don't have current maps yet drawn, but we do anticipate and plan to have them and bring them back to the community so that the community can have a voice in it again. What was real intentional when we wrote the grant was for this to be a community-driven process, and not just for a small group of people sitting at the district office to make the decisions and bring to the board to say, here is what we feel like should happen, without having a robust conversation across the entire community. So we're going to turn it over now to our partners. We have with us, I think Tyronda Minter may be on the call, I know she had reached out to me earlier and said she may be traveling, and if she is not available, she has in her place Peyton Taylor. We also have Nabil Jalani, Jasmine Mangat, and Paul Riggins with Plural Connections that are going to be talking about what we're hearing through these sessions and what we're also hearing from the surveys that are going, going out. So I'm going to turn it over to, turn it over to them now. Let me see if I can switch screens. So, Nabil, you and your team are up first.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes? Okay, great, thank you so much, Effie, and good evening to the board and to the community. Thanks so much for having us. So we are the Plural Connections Group, we're supporting some of the data analysis work that's going on as part of this project, and we're super excited to have the opportunity to get to work with you all and to really start to learn from the community, really, how you feel about this project, and really excited to continue to dive into the data and, as Effie said, really build that into some of the modeling and the map making that's forthcoming. So just a quick update, we've been focused particularly on, on the survey, and so we have about, actually about 4,800 survey responses now. I think it was 4,500 at the time the slides were made a few days ago, so fortunately, in the past week to two weeks, we've seen some really great uptake on, on the survey responses, and so we're at about 4,800. We're also spending quite a bit of time really trying to reach families who, whose voices are currently underrepresented in the, in the data, and so we're looking at the schools where we have fewer responses than we would expect, and doing some targeted outreach through SMS, and also working with the district team and the teams, parent committees, and other organizations at the schools, really to try to make sure we can reach those families and make sure that their voices are included in the survey responses as well. One of the things that's been important to the team as a whole is to make sure that this feedback process is not a black hole. So we know, you know, oftentimes there are feedback processes that might occur where you'll spend, you know, the community will spend a lot of time and effort sharing their feedback through a survey or showing up to a session, and then they never know what happens with that feedback, and they don't get to hear what other parents and other students and other stakeholders are saying. And so we've actually developed a platform that you can visit. It's a public platform, listening.wsfcasvoices.org, where you can actually go and you can see what is the community saying about, about the fostering diverse schools project and process. What are some of the responses through the surveys? What are some of the, the things people are saying in the listening sessions? You know, who are we hearing from? Who are we not hearing from? So that's sort of the purpose of that platform, is to give us a sense of, of who's represented in the feedback so far, and what are some of the key themes and topics, hopes and concerns? The goal of this is to make this process as transparent as possible. You know, we want to share what are the things the community is excited about, what are the things they're concerned about. And so we encourage you to check out that site whenever you get a chance, share it with your friends, and give us feedback, yeah, on, on how we're sharing the feedback so far with you, but also other ideas that, that you'd like to see implemented as we go through this process. And, you know, just to underscore what Effie and Frank were saying earlier, the next steps for us are really to start to figure out and to explore how we can factor in the voices we're hearing through the surveys, through the listening sessions, in order to inform the development of new maps. I think this is an exciting opportunity. I don't think, I don't know of any redistricting effort that's happened in this way before, where we really first listen to the community and then use that to inform the development of maps. Like Effie and Frank said, there are no maps right now. It would be completely against the principles of this project, frankly, to have maps that we already know are the ones that we want to propose. We have no idea, we're really trying to explore this from first principles to understand what does the community value? How does that vary across the geography of the district? And how can we factor that in a nuanced way in order to produce maps that further the objectives of the project and also attend to what the community cares about? So I'll stop there and hand it back to you, Effie.
All right. So next, we want to hear from Urban Strategies, and so Tyronda Minter and Peyton, whoever's going to go first, to give us a little bit of update on the listening sessions so far.
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone. I'll jump in first, and I'll let Tyronda finish off anything I may have missed, but good evening, everyone. Very quickly, my name is Peyton Taylor, I'm an executive fellow at Urban Strategies. And very quickly, on Urban Strategies, we are a full-service organization that's been operating for over 40 years at the intersection of economic development, community development, and housing stability. You may see our work in Winston-Salem with the Cleveland Avenue Homes Choice Neighborhood Initiative work there. I think Dr. McMillan really beautifully summarized our qualitative efforts and intentions behind the listening sessions, so I'll just use this time to really dive in on the data we've seen so far from June to August. So in this time span, we've had 600 participants register, and 420 participants attend our virtual and in-person sessions. That 70% of students, staff, and parents and guardians have That seventy percent of students, staff, and parents and guardians have registered for a listening session. By the numbers, we have about a hundred and seventy-two parents, twenty-five staff, sixteen stakeholders who identify as parents and staff, thirty-eight students, and a hundred and sixty-nine unmarked. And we've given out over five hundred flyers. On the right-hand side of the screen, you can see some more breakdown by in-person canvassing event efforts by month. And then looking at our style of facilitation, we've had seven in-person facilitation sessions, fourteen virtual, six events, and one canvassing effort. Again, these numbers are June through August, and as Dr. McMillan had already mentioned, we are very excited to ramp up and continue full steam ahead with our efforts already through this month and into the fall. And I think I'll pass it back to Tyronda or Dr. McMillan to keep moving forward.
Tyronda, was there anything you wanted to add?
No, we'll turn it back over to you.
All right, perfect. So there was actually a session earlier today that had thirty-five members from our community that participated, so that was exciting. And so we know as more and more people are getting involved, we're going to have more and more voices. So here are some of our next steps. We're going to continue with stakeholder engagement, Part One. We actually are working through our plan and scheduling sessions with every middle and high school for students in grades seven through twelve. Students are also encouraged to take the survey, and so when the information comes out through email or text message to families or with the flyers that are being distributed, they are invited to take it. Parents do have the option to opt out, and there is a form that they can fill out to opt their child out if they do not want them to participate in the survey. And we're keeping up with that information. For the listening sessions that we will do with students, it will happen at their schools. So principals have identified a designated contact that we're working with through our office. To identify the students, parents will have to fill out a permissions form to give their child permission to come and sit down and be a part of the listening session. We also are scheduling school staff sessions, and so we've identified schools in each area to actually host listening sessions at. The selection for those school staffs were in part to a number of things. We wanted to make sure we captured voices across elementary, middle, and high school. We also wanted to look at how our schools are situated in terms of economic diversity, and we also looked at with Plural Connections, one of the things has been very helpful in a way that I've never seen community engagement before, is that we are clearly identifying where we're hearing the majority of voices and where we're not. And so it helped us to be very targeted, even with schools, to say, we're not hearing a lot from those staff members either. So we have several schools that we will be hosting sessions. If a school is not identified, what's been communicated to principals is that their staff members can join any of the opening listening sessions. That will happen. So we will continue to do that and to host our listening sessions for the community at large. Urban Strategies has been very helpful with tagging along multiple community events, talking to families, and hearing from them in those ways. So those are some things we're going to be continuing to do to capture stakeholder voice. The data dashboard where you saw the link to, that is up and live. Steering Committee met Thursday of last week. Thursday, is that right? Thursday of last week. So they got the first taste of it, but it is up and live, and it will be updated weekly. I think what we've determined is that it will be updated on Fridays. We will continue to do data analysis based on what we're getting from surveys and the listening sessions, and then that will be utilized to help to devise a plan. And then we'll be moving forward with planning for the second round of the engagement where we'll actually be able to take plans and model maps back to the community the early part of next year. So just for the listening audience and anybody who goes to the board agendas to see, here are ways they can get connected. They can scan to take the survey, RSVP for a listening session. They can follow the progress on the webpage. We are continuing to update stuff as we are learning and gathering information. We also established a hotline. So for families who may not have access to technology, not comfortable with it, they can actually call in and give feedback as well. So we're trying to cover all of our bases to hear from as many people as we possibly can. Questions? Board Member Kay.
So first, I want to say thank you for doing the fun fact myth game. And just to clarify one more time, the map that is floating around and being shared on multiple platforms is not ours, has nothing to do with what we are doing. It was derived from another source, correct?
So fun story about the map that's floating around out there, and I joke with our partners because it was actually created as a research project years ago by some of our partners. Those maps are terrible. I guarantee you, those will not be the maps that anyone's going to see. And so I pick on our partners. But the reason they're terrible is because it wasn't even using our data. It was using federally available data. It was done for four thousand different school districts. It was purely for a research paper. It's not at all what we're thinking we're going to end up with. It's not even one of the maps that would even show up because, as we've discussed, we wanted to first hear from the community before we even started making any new maps.
Vice Chair, Bohanna.
Yes, okay. So just a couple of questions. But first, I want to say I love the website with the data. I looked at that earlier, and it's just so intuitive, and you can click and look all around, and it's interactive. And I really do think that, I think that that's really important for our community to have that website to be able to kind of look and see where the entries are coming from. But I just had a couple of questions. First, for individuals out there who may, you know, heard you say, Dr. McMillan, about how we haven't revisited our lines in thirty years, why is that a problem? Like, why do we need to do that?
Well, for one, our community has grown. Demographics have expanded. I was just at the Latin Ed Summit, I guess, last week or the week before. Carolina demography shared some really interesting data. So in the nineteen nineties, early nineteen nineties, we only had sixty thousand Hispanic people living in the state of North Carolina. North Carolina. That was around the time as well that when our new, our current landscape in nineteen ninety-four rolled out, we had, I think around, I forget, it was a small number, a few thousand. In a matter of about ten to fifteen years, the number increased, tripled. It's projected that by twenty thirty-five, if I remember correctly, we'll have about one point six million Hispanic families, children, living across our entire state. The date, also the other data that they showed was that we were number three as a school district with actual raw numbers of Hispanic students in our district. Behind Charlotte Mecklenburg was number one, Wake County was number two. So, one, we have an expanding demographic with our fastest-growing group of families and students being Hispanic. That's one. We also have seen lots of growth in terms of neighborhoods, housing developments, new highways. I've only been working here for a short time. I don't have to get on fifty-two anymore. Thank you, to get to work. I cannot get down to fifty-two, and I can get here much quicker. So with the expansion that has happened, our community has changed. It's evolved, and we are behind the times, really. We have not kept pace with the growth, the change in our community. And so it's time to do it. It's worth the effort to do it, and what I appreciate about the process is that it's not just based on a district-driven decision. It is really trying to bring the community together around a complex issue that we really need to tackle.
Okay. So the other question I had was around diversity. Why, so why is, not to use the name of the grant, but why is fostering diversity in schools important, and how is that related to academic achievement?
Perfect question. So this grant is really focused on disrupting poverty, so economic diversity. We do have a number of schools in our district where we see high concentration of poverty. Whether it is a community-eligible provision school or not, it would be a hundred percent free. I'm just going to say free, a hundred percent free. Research has clearly shown when you have high concentrations of poverty, the challenges that come and the resources that are needed to have the positive benefits for students in those schools. When there's greater economic diversity across schools, one, in line with our mission and vision, that we're preparing kids for a global society where children and people learn to live together, work together, understand cultural differences, have empathy for each other, and those are the durable skills that we talk about. But research has shown over and over again, where there's economic diversity, you have raised academic outcomes, you have higher likelihood of kids to graduate from high school and not drop out, go to college, or post-secondary opportunities. I mean, the list is endless because of the access and opportunities that comes along with it.
Thank you.
Board Member Crowley.
Speaking of that, so during Phase One, we identified thirty percent of our schools as being socio-economically diverse. What is the correlation to academic achievement?
So I don't have that in front of me, but we can share that with you because one of the things that we did after that board meeting is that we identified those schools specifically. We looked at performance grades, but we're also doing some other digging because we also know there's other factors that play a critical role, like sense of belonging. So what is the culture and climate of those schools as well in comparison to schools that are not as diverse? So we're doing a little bit more digging with that, but that is information that we will be bringing back to the community and to the board, particularly as we begin to share what the impacts of our current boundaries have, and then with the proposed changes, the impact that those proposed maps would actually have on schools.
Okay. I really think it's important that we make the correlation with academic achievement.
Absolutely. That's part of our project team's conversation.
If that's part of the cell, that this is going to lead to better academic achievement, and we, as a board, are in charge of our mission to educate students, that has to be foremost in our minds, I think. And to the speaker, to the public speaker earlier, who, you know, the questions were, what academic outcomes can we expect? And that has to be part of this process.
Absolutely, and I know Frank wants to jump in, and so that is a part. Now, what I will say is that oftentimes people want an overnight success story. Where it would be-
I'm just asking, what we already have, if we know thirty percent of our schools-
Yeah, we can definitely share that with you. But I'm saying for the larger community, as we disrupt poverty, we've got to look at all of those factors. But what we know is that with good instruction, with disruption of concentrated poverty, a strong culture and climate in a school, that every kid in that building actually benefits from that.
And I did want to just add to that answer really quick, too. So, yes, we can show, you know, from preliminary data, we're still pulling all the data together for the list. We have the list of who the thirty percent of schools, we also have the list of where there's concentrated wealth. And, yes, those schools are doing well. And then we have lists of schools where there's concentrated poverty, and, yes, those schools are not doing well. So, of course, we want to show the success stories, but we don't want to leave behind the more than thirty percent where there is the concentrated poverty. So I think that's also an important thing, the academic outcomes in those schools as well. So I think this is a situation where it's kind of a slam dunk where we can have a rising tide that's going to lift all our boats. So that's going to come out in the data that we share with you.
Board Member Watts.
So, two questions. One deals with logistics. How many people are currently hired to work on the canvassing piece?
So, Tyronda, do you want to speak to that because that is more of your team with Urban Strategies?
How many people are directed to the canvassing piece? How many staffers are out there canvassing?
How many people on the staff from Urban Strategies, I guess to say, dedicated to this project?
Or who are doing the canvassing phase?
Or doing the canvassing pieces.
Locally on our staff, we have at least four to five local staff members who are involved in our local efforts on a, like, week-to-week basis, but we also bring in members from our national team to come assist for the larger events that we have planned so far.
My reasoning for the question-
And we've also engaged students. I'm sorry, I'm traveling, so I'm going in and out, but we've also engaged a couple of our students from our Choice Neighborhood Initiative site to help us also with canvassing.
Just had an idea. I don't know if it'll work or not, or feasibility of working, but since we're getting ready to go into a political season, is it possible to have early voting sites to have people pass on information in regards to the survey or other ways to we can get information out there using those sites that are across the county? That's just a thought. I'm not sure if we could do that or not.
I think we can make that happen. It's very similar to a parent engagement session that happened tonight with families trying to pursue their GED. And our members from our Cares team, we gave them the flyers, the survey, and asked them to have parents to take the survey while they were there. So we're trying, so we hadn't thought about the polling sites, but with everything that's going on, we're like, here.
Yeah, especially the early-
Take these.
The early polling sites are very limited, and they're kind of spread out to the community. They can maybe do another way. My second question deals with the whole listening sessions. Why do you think there's a disconnect in, quote, the listening sessions versus a to-do work session? There seems to be some disconnect there with, or expectations, when I come to the meeting, I'm expecting to do this, but you guys are doing this. There seems to be a very disconnect in that somehow.
So I know that's one of our problems of practice that we're continuing to work around that is on our agenda for our project team tomorrow as well. Just how do we improve based on some of the feedback that we have heard? So I don't want to, like, speculate and say exactly what it is, but one of the things that's very beneficial with us meeting every week is that we get to hear in real time what Urban Strategies is experiencing, and then we try to problem solve. And I will, I'm just going to give a shout out to Amanda Lamer because we did have a spell of time that we didn't have a chief of communications, and she's just kind of jumped in to the fire, and so we've been able to get her connected to the work and bring her along to help us to strategize and problem solve some things, too. Board Member Brown Gaither.
I wanted to thank you all for the listening sessions. I did attend one of them, and I want, like Richard, I would like to see us to expand that. But I also would like to see that perhaps even for the community that's listening now, you know, go out there, answer the survey, also sign up for a listening session. So all of those in the community really need to sign up for a listening session, and if there are more that are needed, we need to know that. Because I know specifically, I asked for more in person. I'm not one of those people who like to do the virtual thing, so I need to have more in person. So I have requested that also.
Are there any other questions?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question. You know, as soon as the article came out in the journal, you know, I started getting texts, started getting emails, and the concern was, which I think y'all may already know, but the million-dollar question is, is this a backdoor to get rid of school choice? There are a lot of folks that are up in arms about that.
So, again, as the executive director of Choice and Magnet, that is not what this project is about. Whether or not there's other initiatives that have anything to do with Choice, I can guarantee you that this project has nothing to do with trying to get rid of Choice in any way.
Any other?
I'm sorry. And then, as you guys are putting the plan together, which I think I've voiced this a couple of times, maybe three times, and I don't know if the numbers are still true, maybe Andy can answer that, but one of the things that we have been successful here in Forsyth County is our market share. And I guess the concern is the way this is starting to come out. People are getting concerned. Have y'all thought about how this is being communicated and how it could affect our share? Because right now, I think the legislatures have increased the opportunity scholarships. So have y'all looked at all of those pieces that could affect us? Because with market shares, do go money, and with money, teachers, with teacher staff.
Exactly, and that's one of the reasons why, I mean, if you just look at how we're co-leading this, that's why the Office of Choice and Magnet, myself, with student assignment, our whole job is keeping up that market share. So that's why I'm co-leading this project with that very goal as one of my main purposes. So I think it's really important to note that we're very aware of that and why we're trying to reassure families that we're not talking about uprooting anybody, we're not talking about busing students across the county or anything like that. We're actually trying to make things better for everybody. One thing that I didn't share in this is, you know, working in student assignment, I constantly hear anecdotes about, why is my residential school so far from my house? There's another school right across the street. You know, so this is us trying to gather that- You know, so this is us trying to gather that data from the whole county to try to make something that works better for everybody so that we can increase our market share.
And once again, I said this before, I just think whenever we are exploring something of this nature, that we're just going to have to do the, we're just going to have to cross our Ts, dot our Is, and just like people say, location, 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 we've got to communicate, 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 the intent and the purpose and all of those things. And I think Leah might have said this, somewhere in all of this, we've got to make sure that we have, we've got to talk about the academic outcome. If we move this way, what's the outcome? And once again, when that article came out the journal, I got a lot of texts, a lot of emails, and people are concerned about their homes, the values of their homes, the appraisals and all those things. So, you know, and we may laugh at that, but that is what is out there.
We've definitely been hearing that, and even as we began to write the grant and tackle that, and even with our partnership with Bridges and how it's connected us with districts across the country, those are things that, that comes up in the conversation. We actually are planning to meet with, we have about three or four districts Durham, public schools being one of them, and then some that are out of the state because they've gone through the process. Not quite the way we've done it, but there are some lessons that they've learned. So we're trying to also continue to learn from other districts that's been through the process to help us as we go through the process. I think the one thing that's critical for board members to remember and to remind your constituents that this is a two-year planning grant. So what we keep hearing come to us is that we already have a plan, this is a planning grant, and the part of planning is to hear and then design, and then go back to the community for further input. So we're not at a place yet, even with the listening voices, we were not at a place to even share like data points. We're at a better place now. So I just think that's critical for the community to remember that we're in a planning phase, we're not in an implementation phase.
But let's just do everything on our side with our new marketing guru, with you guys, to sharpen up, tighten up on our communication so this does not disrupt once a set of Forsyth County, County School System. Because I've been here since I was born, you know? And I want to make sure the system stays stable.
And through the grant process, we've been able to bring on a marketing company that's also helping. They've gone out into some listening sessions, they are giving us some feedback, too. So we're trying to leverage partners, other partners that help us with this process, too. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next, Lauren Richards, our Chief Operations Officer, will discuss the 2025-2026 Academic Calendar Options and Survey Request.
Good evening, Board Chair Kaplan, members of the board, and Superintendent McManus. So I am back again to talk to you about the 2025-26 Academic Calendar. You may recall, we talked about this a little bit in the spring. I think we might have been a little too early, believe it or not, that's not something I get to say much anymore. But we did put a survey out in the spring, and we did not get great response on that survey. And so I am back again this evening to talk a little bit more about the calendar, a couple tweaks that we made, and then we are going to work with our new chief communications officer and her team to do a big push to try to get a response for this calendar. And so, quick reminder for everyone, we do have our calendar legislation so that anyone can click here and read through that lovely material. A few things just to lift up, we are always trying to plan a 215-day calendar for our certified staff, and we are always striving to meet 1,025 instructional hours, and we actually tend to go over that so that we can make decisions around inclement weather days and still meet that requirement for the state. Throughout the last couple of years, we have had a calendar committee comprised of many different members throughout the district, central office team, and also principals, teachers, TAs, and other staff in our schools to bring these calendars to life. And aside from the general statute, we also have local parameters that we try to lift up every single year around support for certain days off around different quarters, different times of the year, athletic schedules. Halloween has been a big topic of conversation the last couple of years, and so we're always trying to lift up the things that our community is asking for as well if they fit. So just pause on this slide again. So just to call out the different types of R-days in our calendar, we do have three different types. So we have the PD days, the calendars have two PD days built in, one at the start of school, and then one in early fall so that there can be some district department level training for our teachers to support instruction in the classroom. Our T-days, which are reserved for our teachers, and our S-days, which are reserved for our school administrators to schedule professional development. All right, so, calendar differences. Doesn't look like very many, does it? It's not. So in 2025-26, this calendar was very, very tight. If you pull up August of '25 on your phones or your calendars, you'll see that August 1st is on a Friday. I don't know about you, but I don't think anyone wants to come back to work on a Friday. And so kind of hard to schedule that day. And so staff workdays start on the following Monday. There are seven staff workdays at the start of both of these calendars, with students both starting on August 13th. The end day for both Calendar A and B is also the same for staff and students. Both calendars have 176 instructional days. And the biggest difference that you see here is spring break. And so where spring break falls in March or April in alignment with that Easter holiday. And so what I want to say is, kind of, the devil's in the details. And so I encourage you to pull up the calendars. You do have the staff versions that show the R-days, and then the English and Spanish versions for the student calendars that omit those R-days. Pay attention to where the R-days fall for the end of the quarter, the end of the second semester, third quarter, spring break. Those are where you're going to see the deviations in these two calendars because to get 215 days in that tight window was a little tough, and there were not many variations to make. In the last iteration, the board had asked us to share potential graduation dates, and while these are not on the calendar for voting, if you do look at these calendars based on the last student day, we would be looking at scheduling graduation for both Wednesday, May 20th through Saturday, May 23rd. Again, a little far out, no schools have been assigned to any of those dates or times or locations, but that would be the expected outlook based on our current planning for graduation dates. And so we will be working to publish this survey starting tomorrow. If anyone has already completed the survey, we're going to be asking that they go ahead and complete the survey again, because again, the calendars are just slightly different. I do believe B is the same, A is different, but again, by one or two days. And so take a look at them, dive deep. We're going to be working with many of our community partners and our different advisory and advocacy boards to ask them to do big pushes to our staffs and to our students and our families to get feedback so that we can come back to you at the end of October and be able to go ahead and approve a calendar for 2025-26 academic year. And so with that, I'll open it up for questions from board members.
Yes, Board Member Watts?
Not a question, but a concern. Have we heard any feedback from the state legislature with our current school calendar, which, quote, "violates or breaks the law"? And so now we're moving forward to a second year, quote, "breaking the law". So have we heard anything about consequences or perhaps penalties to our district based on our current status?
I have not. I will turn to our superintendent.
Yes, I mean, the one, we received that one letter that was shared with the board, and I can't remember when that was. Do you remember Board Chair Kaplan? And that was, no follow-up since then?
No follow-up, no follow-up. And in, I'm sorry, point of privilege, and in the discussion with the lobbyists for the School Board Association, they have not heard anything. Yes, Board Chair Kaplan.
I'd like to thank you for having the start of school be midweek. We've heard over and over that that first week being five days is just too big of a transition for staff and students. And then, is there a possibility, I'm not sure if this is done at the school level, but for elementary, I know for some of the younger grades, they like to alternate kids coming, kindergarten students coming in, and some of the teachers have requested that they be able to do that again, or what's...
No, we are not doing that. That was a, that was a, not a consistent practice across the district, and we believe the start of school for children should be consistent across our school district as we are, again, a system of schools, I mean, a school system. And so, to be honest with you, that practice, when I talk to other superintendents across the country, is extremely antiquated. And I understand that it might seem like it's supportive, but there are districts across this country that all kindergartners start on the first day. And it is just honestly, it's a practice that I've been surprised at since I got here, and so have many people that I've spoken to about it. So, yeah.
And then for 2026, May 20th through the 23rd includes the Saturday of Memorial Day Weekend, and I know we just had a revision in the graduation schedule to get it off that Saturday. So would it actually be the 19th through the 22nd?
It potentially could. And so because the graduation dates would not be something that would be voted on as part of the calendar, and so depending on the venues that we use, the dates that are available, hopefully with approving the calendar in October, instead of kind of that January timeline that we've been in, we should be able to reserve early and pick the dates that we want, which would be really helpful so that we could avoid that Saturday. But in discussions, we wanted to go ahead and put it out there as a potential option so that we didn't add it later and then create some conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks so much. Next, Cheryl Walker, our Chief Construction and Planning, will discuss the Ashley Elementary Construction and Design Documents Approval, which was briefed in the September 27, 2024 Finance Committee.
Thank you very much again, board and superintendent. Wanted to bring this back to you tonight as potential requests to complete the construction documents and the approval of the funding source for the new Ashley Elementary. Just for sake of our community and our guests here, the 2016 bond included funds to do design for New Ashley through design documents. So what typically happens in a design process is you have a schematic design, then a design document, then a construction document. Construction document allows you now to take it out to bid for pricing. So our bond carried us through schematic and design documents. We're asking tonight potentially go to what we call CDs or construction documents that allow us to go out to bid. Wesley Curtis is architect with now Michael Graves Corporation. They presented schematic design back in March 2024, and the board approved that. So full design documents are now complete, so we have met the requirement that we had within the 2016 bond. Just for the general knowledge in the public, architect fees through, or through construction documents are based kind of on a percentage of estimated construction costs. When they see the number and try to, you know, how did you get here, what is out of that fee, it's based upon a percentage of the construction overall construction costs. Moving from design documents to completed CDs, again, allows us to go out to bid. And then that fee to take it from design documents to construction documents is $700,000. So I wanted to give you a little bit of a timeline. The anticipated timeline would be to complete the construction documents in February, March 2025. A lot of that time's tied up doing zoning permitting requirements that we have to do on the particular new site. We would like to go to bid in March or April 2025. As you see, we've had a 16-18-month construction window, and the school would open during the calendar year 2026, 2027. We have programmed estimated 103,000 square feet, and the estimated cost of the school is around $46 million. That is not what we're asking you to fund tonight, we're asking you to fund the $700,000 for the design documents to construction documents. And that is our staff recommendation. And I'll entertain any questions with that.
Just really quick, is it too early to answer the question of what type of, if we would do a hard bid or CM at risk with Ashley?
No, it is not too early, and we, I think that's a conversation that, you know, we need to entertain. I think it really, you know, we've struggled with that at Brunson, and I'll be just totally honest, we, I think our CM was not really knowledgeable about our community, they were not from around here, did not have relationships within our community, I think it hurt us. I don't mean that disrespectfully to the contractor, not at all. But you can see when we changed that process, what it brought to the table to us. And I think, you know, we need to be very forethought in that decision of how we move forward, whether it's CM at risk or construction hard bid, you know, what that looks like within our community.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you know, I said this in committee meeting, as we talk about the physical structure of Ashley, let's just make sure that we be mindful of, I guess, of some thoughts and plans we had two boards ago or two cycles ago, when we really talked about having wraparound services for Ashley and just making it a unique school.
Thank you.
I will say, just to think about that, we are looking at little things in design like no wax floors, be the first one in our district, solar lighting in our parking lots. We are looking at some unique opportunities that we have not discussed before as a part of Ashley. So you'll see a lot of that when we come back, if we get to this process through design documents. You'll see a lot more detail and of some things that may be new.
Sounds very good. Thank you. Thanks, Daryl. So we have five action items to consider tonight. First, consider approval to post the calendar options for public comment. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Ashley Design and Construction, Design Documents Briefed in the September 27, 2024 Finance Committee Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Oh, okay. So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes eight to one. Next, consider approval of the 2026 bond reallocation, which was briefed in the September 10, 2024 Building and Grounds Committee Meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Kuhn, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the contract with American Reading Company for Flat Rock Middle School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Kuhn, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the proposed changes to policy 3240, grant funding briefed at the September 10 Policy Committee Meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
So I have a motion by Vice Chair Bohan, and a second by Board Member Kuhn. Any discussion?
Yes, Chair Kaplan, was there any language put in that policy, the revision about the funding piece?
That's a...
We had talked about including, about making sure we had the funds in hand or before we started spending.
So there was not to the policy, but that, it was my understanding that more of that would go in AR?
Okay.
Because that is more of a procedural piece of it. So we'll make sure that's reflected in the AR.
Thank you.
Okay. So we've had a motion, a second, we've had some discussion, any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. That ends our action items for this evening. Our next order of business is the superintendent's update.
Thank you. So, what is that? Oh, it's okay. No, no, you can move. So thank you. I wanted to highlight really quickly, we've recently received our AP data back. This is not all of it, we are going to present this at a later time where you see all of it, but it's important that as we see successes, we share them with the board. And so this is newer data that we received. I've pulled out of just a few areas, you can see calculus, chemistry, English Lit, a few content areas, and how we are progressing with our AP pass rates. And so these are taking, we've also increased our number of students taking AP classes, we've increased our students of color taking AP classes, and you can see as we've increased students, our numbers and students of color numbers, our rates continue to increase in numbers of students that are passing the AP exam. And according to Andy, and again, we'll bring this back to you, we are also above the national average. average on AP exams. I'm waiting to see how we've compared to other districts in the state, so hopefully we'll be bringing all that back to you. So that's a success. Teacher residency, I, this is something that, I know Steve's not here tonight, he always gets excited about this because this is us licensing our own teachers and we are about, applications are now open for our third cohort of teacher residency. You can see the data from Cohort One, which is really incredible. So to Dr. Barnes Jones's team, Tina, just, they're doing incredible work and so you can see this. And I think Karen Morris is in that group too. Karen Morris, she leads this work of teacher residency. But you can see in year two, we have 47 teachers in that representing 26 schools, 18 licensure areas. So it's just, this is an incredible homegrown program that is allowing us to license our teachers. And so we'll continue to bring updates, but I just think these results are outstanding. So great work to that team. You heard from Frank tonight and we are excited November 2nd will be our Magnet School Showcase. We're starting to advertise that now, early, so folks can start planning. And the Choice and Magnet application period will be open for grades one through 12, November 2nd through January 31st. Graduation schedule, so this is what you were referring to earlier, this is the final schedule this year and it is starting on Tuesday instead of on Wednesday and will end on Friday. That is Memorial Day Weekend and this allows all of our, you know, we have many staff members that attend graduations, we, this, families, this allows them to have the rest of their Memorial Day Weekend to celebrate our graduates. Panorama Survey, very important that we continue to see, to receive feedback from our families, from our students and from our staff. And so you can see that's coming, October 14th through November 4th. And so again, you can see the details, our goal is 100% participation across the board. That would be amazing. And so we're going to start to push that out soon and you're going to be hearing a lot more about folks completing that survey. World of Work is also coming. This is a big deal. This was last year for, oh gosh, now I'm going to forget, eighth and 10th, right? Eighth graders, 10th graders? That was it, eighth graders, 10th graders. Will all have a chance to go explore different career options at our World of Work event that we host in partnership with Greater Winston-Salem Inc. and Forsyth Works. National Unity Day is coming and I'll tell you the, the conversations earlier about school safety, those were really about the security part of school safety, but there are so many other important components to save schools and that includes the social, emotional wellbeing of our students, the behavioral and mental health of our students. And so things like Unity Day are a time for us to hone in on the importance of bully prevention, on the importance of strong relationships. And so Unity Day is coming, October 16th. Schools have received lots of information about that, things that they can do on campus. And so we will be doing a district-wide focus on unity. This is the month of October. So if you want things to recognize, these are all things that are recognized in our district. And because we won't be back till October 8th, I wanted to make sure we showed some of these, but October is National Principals Month, which is a big deal, we celebrate that. It is Down Syndrome Awareness Month, it's Breast Cancer Awareness Month, School Bus Safety Week, it's College Application Week, it's October 21st through 27th, so that's a big deal for us. National School Lunch will be coming soon, you'll see more about that. You're going to see Bully Prevention Month, and I just shared about Unity Day, Physical Therapy Month, Cyber Security Awareness Month, National Book Month. These are all things that we celebrate and that we recognize and highlight throughout our district. So you'll be seeing a lot more to follow there. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Board? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our Consent Agenda Action Items. First, consider approval of the General Personnel Report and consider approval of the August 13, 2024 Board of Education Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion to approve both consent agenda items?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion passes unanimously. Next, Tuesday, our announcements are Tuesday, October 8, 2024 will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. Let me say goodnight to our Cable 2 viewers before we begin our public comments. Thank you for watching and this will conclude our broadcast.